I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its own liberty and justice.
We don't have a student here. So, two point one, need the adoption of the agenda and the motion?
Some.
Second. Discussion.
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Would you carry?
Item three point one, approval of minutes from September fifteenth. Need a motion?
Some.
Second.
Discussion.
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Would you carry?
Personal items for action, four point one. Need a motion? Some.
Second.
Discussion. Everyone need their questions answered?
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Would you carry?
Personal items for action, five point one to five point three. Need a motion?
Some. Second.
Discussion.
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Would you carry?
And six point one and six point two miscellaneous items, need a motion? Some.
Second.
Discussion.
I thought we already approved transportation across six point one last night.
This is an additional request.
Additional center.
Yeah, I think it's one of those.
I think this one's for seat down, for residential.
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Would you carry?
President's report, I sent that article out, which I thought was interesting on the situation with superintendent, wherever it was where he was. I don't know, the list of things that he was not, that he claimed to be, and I just thought it was interesting how he just made me think about the roles and responsibilities that we have. And how, I appreciate the fact that we all take it seriously, and it's, I believe, based on a principled approach to education, those special kids, and not what's trendy. And it's just interesting how things can get that far, and that responsibility that we have is sometimes taken, not taken for granted, but it's a pretty heavy burden, a heavy responsibility, and I appreciate that. Because it doesn't happen everywhere, obviously. Board can report?
In the first period of the student records, or policies regarding student records, and I think it's just important that there are these policies in place that will make sure that they're followed. So, tonight is the first reading of those, of that particular policy.
Yeah, so I have a legislative committee update, we met in, no, September, and we're going to have the votes for the resolutions go through, I'm going to be online for about four or five hours. Going through our resolutions that NISBA, the school boards association is promoting, on behalf of our students and our board members and our parents across the state. There are twenty-eight resolutions that they're moving forward, and there are about fifteen that are not. And the other thing that happened at the legislative meeting was Randy Kerr is going to be chairing that again, he's a wonderful resource. He's given us a lot of guidance over the years as board members, and Pete Noackey, who's also our area four representative, is the vice chair. In addition, I found out at A D that Nick Mattias from Johnson City, board president, and Michelle Newyse from Harpersville was elected to be our board vice president, president for the Brum Tavag School Boards Association. So they are wonderful resources to all of us, and they did have Dr. Tony Hawkins from SUNY Brum, who met with all the board members that were willing to attend on October second. Unfortunately, I couldn't be there, I would have gone, but my husband had surgery that day, so I was busy with taking care of that young man. In addition, they gave us some other calendars, events that are going to happen throughout the year, and my favorite is meeting our legislative representatives right here in Togrey County, which will be in February. So the date to be determined, and you're all invited, it's usually in the morning, sometimes they have some after the evening events as well, so that's my update.
That's not the need to, the other email I sent out regarding a voting member from the board, the business meeting on October sixteen. Offering that up to anyone who might be interested in it.
Well, I volunteered, when I volunteered to be a committee member, I volunteered to do that, and it's.
Can you vote?
Pardon me?
Can you do vote?
Are you doing, are you voting in person?
I am voting for us, yes, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a representative for Brum Tavag policies, I'm representative for us. And very familiar with the system, used to be in person, used to last several hours, and then it went to Zoom, and it still lasted until midnight, I mean, because there's a lot of debate that goes on amongst board members across the state. It's just been a wonderful addition to my role as a board member, and certainly in the future, if anyone you want to take it over, it's a great learning experience, it really is. Lot of dynamics going on upstate, downstate, and in central New York, and it's good to hear a different perspective, it really is. But I represent Oligo Apple Lake, and I'll be your voting delegate for you. And then I will give you an update on what passes and what doesn't pass, and you will get a booklet that will have all the resolutions that made it through at the state level, okay?
So, I will?
I do too.
Nope, I'll register, I'll leave it, yeah, I'll go in tomorrow and ready to make sure that she registers as ours.
Okay, great, appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, we have some guests tonight, and before we do that, just a couple of quick updates for the board, so I believe that there's been some back and forth with Marathon and other excellencies, they're releasing information in time. But they did, they did come through with that, so we're still set to open the clinic on October eighth. There's going to be a lot of videos and information coming out, Luke is working with Integregad, who's their communications person at Mainlandwell. And we're simultaneously building two websites that are the same, so there's consistency between both districts, so we'll start pointing people to the website to where they can register for appointments and do all the, learn how to go through the portal, all those other different unique things. So, and I believe tomorrow we're shooting a video of some kind at ten o'clock, so that's moving forward, it's good news that we aren't going to get delayed by excels. So we're super thankful for that. One other, just quick note, October eighteenth is homecoming, so that'll be a pretty jam packed day of events and things going on in the community and on the campus, so if you can make it to that, that would be awesome, it'll be, I think, a great day for everybody, so. But now we'll introduce the real folks who are here for tonight, from our queer circle group. Also, we're going to kind of lump it together a little bit, Hawkeye Graphics, and then the trades, so we have Nick Rogers, Luke McAvoy, and Sean Carney. My other. All right, good evening, how's everyone doing?
Good evening. Good.
Good. My name's Sean Carney, I'm a technology engineering teacher here at the high school. The past, this is my seventh year here, the past six summers, we have run a building trades summer program, and then the last, I think, two summers, we ran a Hawkeye Graphics summer program. So we are, my Hawkeye Graphics rep couldn't be here because she's like field doc right now, but I do have Connor Regal. He is, this is his fourth year with me, he's worked, I believe, three summers with me. This past summer, we made him a project manager on some projects, he likes to call himself project manager as well on every project. Sorry. But just kind of an overview, he's going to do some talking, I promise. Building trades this year, we had about ten to twelve students, anywhere from a freshman level, this was our first year accepting college interns. So that was somewhat new to us, our, my college interns were also project managers, those were students that were my work children, and I'm excited to see them go. But they were, they have been with me for four years, I trust them enough to pretty much just throw them on the job, and know that job's going to get done correctly. And that should kind of speaks to the growth of that program, and how far we've made it with building trades. Connor's going to walk us through the three major jobs that we did this summer, there's little odds and ends here and there, but we did have three major jobs that we did over the summer, he's going to talk to a little bit. Go ahead.
So one of the first projects we did this summer was the girls locker room at the pool. The ceiling caved in due to all the water damage, and the lockers were very old and rusty, so they got tore out, and we replaced the old lockers with new lockers, and we redid the ceiling. Gave it a new coat of paint, and that's about it for the floor, and that wasn't a very big project, but then, the next project, we did, we did the shed and what else?
Great.
Wait, our next project was the shed, and the shed was for all the athletic teams, is a storage locker for them, because they only have space, I guess. So, we built a new metal shed, we had to tear down the old freezer where it was, it was right over by the bleachers, if you've seen it, but I think it's a very nice shed.
We're calling it storage building, that sounds better.
Yes.
And then our next project was, we were building a new weight room, I don't know if you know where the team room was, but that's where we put it, we had to tear down maybe four walls, and then put a new coat of paint in there. Put new flooring down, we did, we did a new flooring that we've never done, we did turf this year, which is really hard to do, and then we had to put a new ceiling, but in there, and that's about it for that.
Good job. He's modest, I don't know if anybody, I don't know everybody's experience here, but if you ever laid joint compound on a ceiling all day long, that's why Connor looks so strong here. And it's, it's a hard job to do on your shoulders, he is our joint compound guy, he did everything in that ceiling, he made it look fabulous. As he said, the turf in the new weight room was a brand new thing for us this year, thankfully, we had Officer Wasland help out with us, who has a lot of experience in flooring. Everything matching up perfect, and it just speaks to, you know, the eye of Connor Regal, the perfection there. Is there any questions about building trades before I move on to Hawkeye Graphics?
Are there any opportunities to work with them, as far as how active, like, you had in something like that, is in Tavag County, are there opportunities to team up with other outside areas?
I'm sure that there is, I don't, I don't teach to the actual building trades program here onsite, that's affiliated with O C's now, that's Mr. Rick Creely. It's something we could definitely look into as far as the summer program and.
There's a lot of additional opportunities.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's a great idea.
What was the material of the lockers, are they still metal?
No, they changed them to plastic, I'm pretty sure they're on the temporary, because I'm pretty sure the pool is getting redone, so they're just going to tear them out.
We'll reuse the lockers most likely, when the locker rooms get redone, if that part gets re modeled, we're going to just tear them out, throw them away, they may get old and pink or something like that, we didn't buy them, they're not for over the lives. I think an important part to think about with the summer programs and that is, I had our C M, I just asked them for some numbers and things, and for the cost of the drop ceiling, to have a contractor put in the drop ceiling in that weight room. All the entire material, that would have cost more to have a contractor come in and adjust the ceiling than the materials cost for the entire place, having our student work to do it. He gave me a number, ten dollars a square foot, that's about three thousand square feet, so it's, you know, a lot of these projects are things that, as you guys are working through building projects, are realizing that you can get less and less and less done in a building project than you think, when it's seven, nine, or one by, or four by four bathroom, it feels like sometimes. It's, it's an advantage, and there's a lot of things, you know, the kids are able to do through, I mean, we're really lucky and fortunate to have people like Mr. Carney, Officer Wasland, Mr. Creely, all summer people that experienced it, who worked with the kids, but it's also, I mean, they're, they're getting things done that aren't just extras. You know, they, they wouldn't be getting done, and they don't get done in other districts, and I think that that's a really, have credit to the adults working on these kids, that they're doing adult quality work, and sometimes better than adult quality work. I would put, we've had some of our kids in the past, look at the work and send pictures back to their teacher, and doing, look at what these guys are doing, like, in a back way, our kids. I would put the quality work that these kids have against the work that we are paying them money for every day.
Mr. Daley, you've taken us through the buildings in the past, when the students have done projects, and at least over the last ten years I've been on the board, and I, because we have new members, it would be wonderful to be able to go on and see some of the results of the work that they've done. Because it wasn't just this past year that you've done some things, you've been working on this for a long time, and it's great work that you're doing with the students, and we really, really appreciate that, and we know it's cost savings. And so I think it would be helpful for those that are interested to go see some of the areas of the high school or middle school where they were working, or, you know, the other buildings that they did their projects on.
I think so, Mr. Stoffield's going to have the spotlight, I think, in late November, so he'll be taking.
We'll, we'll do any tours, we'll, we'll obviously hit some of the main spots, especially new areas, but November board meeting for O F A will definitely take.
It's quite a transformation, but to know that the students were, were the ones that did the work, wow.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It's a source of pride as well, you know, I, I wouldn't mind being a kid that goes in, does something, you know, it's something our kids have done, and you're going to hear it from, you know, it's a, it's a sort of pride for these guys, once they can walk in the building and see what they've accomplished.
Surprise for all of us, it really is, I mean, repurposing the building, or as old as it was, is amazing what they've accomplished, so thank you, clearly.
I have just a simple question, you said turf in the weight room, do you mean like real turf like that, or is it just a mere kind of rubber?
Uh, no, this was actual, real turf, yeah, yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, it's.
It looks amazing.
I've never heard that.
It does, it does look really good. But I mean, it's, it's just for, you know, in case that turf is inaccessible, or there's a sports team on there that the kids can still do their drills on, something that they're going to play. Yeah, no, real, real life turf.
Pretty cool.
Yes, yes, something new for everybody. I'll go really quick through Hawkeye Graphics. Hawkeye Graphics also did a summer program this past summer, this is our second summer running Hawkeye Graphics, for those of you that don't know Hawkeye Graphics. It's a collaboration between myself and a graphic art teacher, Caitlin Simpson, that works here, it's an actual, real life business that the kids leave, I would say ninety-five percent of all functions associated with that business. It is promotional items, apparel, pretty much any banner that you see throughout this district has come out of our shop, the pole banners that are new on these, on these poles out here as you drive through the district. I walk the halls and see the T-shirts and the sweatshirts that come out of our shop, I would say, I mean, hundreds of times a day, so. New apparel is just kind of scattered throughout everywhere, I was, I was coming over the bridge last week and saw Mrs. Crawford going into Duncan Dome, that's with Cartham Crawford, senior shirt on. So, it's just kind of, you know, that source of pride, and the kids share the same pride that I do. This summer, we focused on rebranding, I guess, the middle school, last year we focused on the high school, and doing all of the window film on the doors, and teacher signs for each teacher classroom. This year, we focused on the middle school, we had a crew of students do that, and they had a hand in designing those window film and the teacher door stickers and nameplates. And then we had another crew of students working through our actual orders that come through that business, which were apparel orders. And we did just around a thousand shirts this summer, across a bunch of different projects and jobs. And now that fall sports is upon us, or finishing up for some teams, we have senior banners that, that come out of our shop, we have done senior banners for boy soccer, girl soccer, the volleyball team, field hockey team. And with those orders come custom T-shirts with the seniors' names on them, we do warmups for the kids, so they can, they can warm up in different apparel that they play in. And all of those different jobs, those students have a hand in designing those logos, little tweaks to our current logo. It's actually pretty impressive when we walk in first period, and we look inside Miss Simpson's design room, and we have kids out on MacBooks actually designing new logos, we have a new homecoming logo coming next week. Every, every week, it seems, there's something new that the kids are designing and having.
One of the STEM teachers at Mr. B's building last week when I was at Open House, he had it on his lab coat.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
And the design, in a heartbeat, I would have had on my lab coat, the way he designed the, well, he said it was part of his involvement with the kids.
Yes.
But it was the River Hawk, but it was, it was a scientific River Hawk, I don't know how else to describe it. It had me in stitches, it was really good.
Yeah, that was a, that was a last, last year project, actually Merrick Bercher was the student that, that designed that, so he did a really great job.
It was cool.
Yeah, any, any questions with Hawkeye Graphics before I?
So how do the students order what they want?
So that goes into like the five percent that we're involved in, is, is we do need to kind of step in when, you know, money is exchanged. We do live printing events, and students do have that face to face interaction, and they are, you know, making change for people, they are dealing with payments and everything. When they need to order something, we do have vendors that are pre-approved through the district, and we go right through those.
So like what you're doing in Open House in Malabi, that's, that was, you were selling things that evening, the folks that wanted to?
Right.
Wanted to get something, whether it was a bag or whatever?
Yeah, absolutely.
And I guess we're managing that with your.
Yeah. On those live events, we try and stay kind of in the back, and we kind of let them be the stars, we'll step in when we absolutely have to.
Thank you.
Who does, like, the coaches, are they always placing orders for warmups or anything, do they contact the, the adult, or is there a student?
So we have.
For all the ordering.
That's a really good question, we have a website through the district, it is on the district's webpage, and if you go there, there's an order form to fill out, and that will, that's just a Google form that's populated to our email account. We have a separate Hawkeye Graphics email account that the kids will monitor, if someone sends an email to that account, it's most likely a student that's getting back to you.
I just have a question, so do you have the students working on the back end of it, the money end of it, the management end of it? Because, you know, here's the front end, but that is the back end, or how.
For sure, for sure, up until about this year, Sean Manau was doing a lot of the bookwork for us, that has since been handed off. I have never seen QuickBooks before, but we are quickly learning, and then by probably mid-year, students will have kind of a glimpse into, you know, how do I create an estimate in QuickBooks? How do I, what's an invoice, how do I invoice, what's our, what's our profit ratio for this job, when I put my expenses in? So the business end of things is sort of like a coming feature for that class and that program, but it is, it is on its way. Great, thank you. Thank you.
I can second the fact that Connor knows what's up, because when I'm looking for a tool and Sean's doing it, that kind of hurts out.
Connor, do you want to tell the, tell the board what your plan is, your future?
Oh, my plan at the high school is to join an electrical union and get my five year apprenticeship, and then become a journeyman, and I'll see where that takes me, maybe I'll start an electrical business or something, but that's my plan.
So I'm Nick Rogers, I teach the Wonder Circle Project, I'll be going with Luke McAvoy and Caitlin Simpson, also helps out as well. And we presented last year about the project, but I'll give you a quick overview of what it is, so essentially what we do is, we build a factory five kit car, race car from the ground up. We order the car right from the manufacturer's factory five, and students assemble it, and they modify it, and they come up with the design, and they plan it all out, and we build it, and.
And along with that, there's a marketing side, which is what Luke and Caitlin are involved with. And they pretty much tell the story of the build throughout the year. So as we're building, marketing students come over, they take pictures, they do interviews, they produce content, they put it out on social media, they write newsletters and all sorts of stuff that you'll see in those handouts that, that they do throughout the year. It's a competition between, right now there's seven schools involved in the competition and pretty much the, the school that has the best race organization, so the best overall build, along with the best marketing side. You know, they compete in a variety of categories for, for the championship. And as you can see by this fifty-pound trophy behind me, we were the winners last year in, in our build. And we're the only school to be two-time winners in the program so far. So we're happy about that and we're hoping to capitalize on our athletic performance. I wanted to go over just so, just so you guys kind of have an understanding of how the competition works. I have, you know, the score categories. Because it's more than just building a race car and posting social media. There's, there's a ton to it. So the first, the first category is the technical build. So we build the race car over in the maintenance building and then it is evaluated by Alfred State's Motorsports crew. And they go through it, they check every nut and bolt, they, you know, evaluate it and make sure it's safe to drive. And they, you know, pretty much, they, they judge the overall quality of the build. So that, that's the biggest category. That's thirty-six out of a hundred points. And then there's a performance test where a professional race car driver, Chris Dyson typically does it. He's a Trans Am driver. And so he test drives all the cars and he evaluates his performance. So we take it down to Lime Rock Park, which is, which is in Connecticut. He drives it around a little, you know, little course they have there and he, he judges the cars that way. There's also a sim racing category. So we have a race simulator in the high school right now where student, students in the program from all, all the schools, they race each other once a month throughout the school year. And it's a pretty big production. It's, it's broadcast live on YouTube. There's a announcer from the UK that comes on there and announces it. He's a professional broadcaster and it's really, it's a really cool thing. You know, the students get all, they get all nervous and, but we dominated in that last year. We did very well. That helped us get over the, the, you know, the championship. There's also a pathways class that goes along with it. That's taught by one of the people in Winter Circle, Mateo Longren. And what the class consists of is generally, he, he teaches students to think about their futures in, in actionable ways. So like how to, you know, how to approach somebody that you want maybe to get an interview from. You know, how to conduct yourself in certain situations like, you know, when around in public, you know, because everything's a job interview is essentially their message. So there's homework assignments that go along with that that kind of allows students to dive deeper into that. So that, that's part of it as well. There's, there's a presentation at the end, a big professional presentation. That, that's a big part of the project where, where Luke helps prepare all the, you know, all the students to give a professional pitch. And that's what those, that you're in front of you, you're holding in front of you, those are pitch deck that we handed all the judges last year. That kind of explains the overall presentation that, that we're gonna give. And then a logo design you see up on the screen, right there. Students designed that logo last year. That was our Olego Racing logo that we want. But that's also evaluated by people who work in that industry. We come up with a commercial, the thirty-second commercial that, that we create and, you know, that, that's evaluated. Our social media post is, is another category. The newsletters are another category. We have to come up with a mission and value statement. So just like a legitimate organization. And then, and then what is it? Oh, then, then the pitch deck that, that you're holding, that's another part of it. So that's been along with the, you know, explanation of, of how, how we're evaluated and how the project works.
Nick, do you recall the, I can't recall the student's name, but we have a student who through this, through the Winter Circle, that connected with a company of Georgia.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, thank you. I, I wanted to mention this. So part of this program, we actually had two students, two years in a row, that were selected to, for an internship with the Trans Am racing organization. Two years ago, it was Blake Miller. He went and what, what they do is at the final championship, they actually stay an extra day down in Connecticut at the racetrack and they get in the, it's like the, the technical evaluation of the cars. So they judge the cars and make sure they're not breaking any rules, stuff like that. So they actually get right in there and they, they look at the cars, they're going over. So Blake Miller was the first student and the last student actually had a second student write a prompt that was selected as well. And only two students are selected out of all the schools. So we're lucky enough to have two students from Olego, two years in a row, that were selected for those positions. And Blake Miller, on top of that, because he did such a good job down at the Trans Am internship, he was actually paid to go down to Rhode Atlanta, Georgia and be part of the, the technical team down at, for, for Trans Am. So it was a, yeah, it was a really big opportunity. And we have other students, Keaton Coin is another one that comes to mind. I mean, he's pretty much fallen in love with this stuff and this is not what he wants to do. He wants to be involved with cars and, and things like that. So, you know, he, he, you know, it's just, it exposes students to things that they don't normally see and they, they like that, especially the performance side of it. And we've developed a pretty good relationship with Mike Thompson over there at TNT Performance right off campus there. He's come over and he helped us actually on Friday. We did a cam swap in our engine this year, if you know what that is.
They, right, you had a guy?
Yeah.
An engine builder come down from Rochester through Mike and say, this is a professional engine builder. These kids got exposed to someone that has that high level for a reason.
Yeah, Mike brought that guy down from Rochester and, yeah, he builds, he builds engines from scratch. So it's just awesome getting kids in front of these people that have just this kind of knowledge, like just awesome knowledge and, and, you know, different, different categories.
Are there any other schools in the group tag of OSCEs that are doing something special like this?
Not currently, not, not this program.
This close, the closest school that you compete with is where?
So it was Waverly. Waverly was part of the project for a little longer than we were actually. But this year, they're not, they're not doing it. So the other six schools are actually all downstate, just tipsy area.
Okay.
So we're the only upstate school.
Cam was involved at some point too.
Cam, there was a ball. Watkins Glen was involved at one point, but they're no longer.
It comes down to having the right people and that's why some schools don't. You don't get there. You can have all the resources you want, you have the right people in front of the kid.
Absolutely.
And we're very fortunate to have these guys. There was a comment made by another upstate school, my argument, that, well, we, we just can't compete with the upstate schools. Can't compete with them. And then the next year they, so it really comes down to, you know, but having that, having the right people in front of the kid and having the physical support.
So is that truck instead or does it move to the next?
No, this is ours. We have two of these actually.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Where do you have them on display?
They're in my classroom right now. We're doing a lot of social media things with them currently. Yeah, we gotta find a location.
They're beautiful.
And, yeah, they're, they're quite happy.
It's, it's at least forty-five.
Yeah, we're, we're using them currently in some of our videos. And the cam swap that you talked about, you look, if you follow our social media, students are working on a video on that. That'll come out on Wednesday. They've got different categories and you kind of like to follow along and share things and share the story of what the build is here.
No, but is it new, new kit each year or is that new, do you refine?
It's a new kit this year. It's a new kit every year. Yeah, a new car every single year. And this year, we're actually going with a military tribute vehicle. So we want to get local veterans, Hollywood County veterans, are in contact with, with some people involved with that to kind of get a listed name and kind of have a tribute to them in some way on a car, on social media, things like that. And build it with like that theme in mind, the military theme. We actually got a, our chassis powder coating, it was donated to us. The powder coating was donated, it was like a three-thousand-dollar chassis powder coating and it's like olive green. It goes perfectly with that theme. It's, it's excellent, so, so, yeah.
What happens to the ink?
Uh, we sell them. We sell them.
Talking about opportunities, a couple of marketing students got invited to Syracuse Nationals where the other schools came and they showed off their cars at the Meacham Auctions site. And the other schools took their cars to Meacham Auction down in PA and they auctioned their cars off. We pulled out others for a little bit of time and then we sold ours at, at the forum. Because it's an opportunity to drive them in the homecoming parade, show them off at, at the school, kind of promote it, things like that.
In the summer, we actually had a summer, a week-long summer program too where we built, it's called an XTF truck. It's another, it's a modification to an F-150 that Factory Five offers. And we had students come in and we, you know, we did that build and we had that truck up there. We're hoping, you know, to be able to cart our race cars around, maybe go to some shows and stuff like that with students and expose them to all that type of stuff. And our, the car we built last year is actually right up front here.
The strawberry festival, not this past year, but the year before, you guys that were on display. And the students, I gotta tell you, very knowledgeable. I had my grandsons with me and they were all over the car. Not touching it, just looking at it.
Right.
But the, the guys that were around the car were just so informative about what they did, how much fun they had. It was, it was really a joy. So, thank you.
Yeah, it's a great program.
So if we finish up the meeting, will the car still be out there if the board wants to check it out?
Yes, I can take it.
Okay, okay.
Okay, District Business, ten point one and ten point two. Any motion?
Motion.
A discussion, just the merger of some of that?
Yeah, it's the same merger from last year. It has to get approved every year. So we have a student that's participating.
Any other discussion?
Yeah. I think so. John.
Okay, sorry, didn't hear that. Lynda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Aye.
Public comment. No doubt. Next meeting, October twenty-seventh. Discussion item, any more news on that?
Yeah, so the meeting was held with the executive committee of the, the teachers' union and some of the building reps and also representation from the retirees with Ben and Linda Frisbee. So that meeting went quite well. And then the next step, we'll be going out into the buildings to meet with different groups of people to inform them what's, what, what it really means to be able to sit down and have a back-and-forth of discussion about what the situation that we're in with the pilot. So that'll, that's, that's wrapping up soon.
Do we, I think we talked a little bit about it on the faculty's calendar.
Yep. Yeah, I think I, I sent you a sketch of the, the plan. I think I put it in on my, on my update last one or one before. It's just kind of a timeline that Luke has helped put together along the way. I think it'll probably stay pretty true, but it might fluctuate a little bit here and there based on how, how things are going with the meetings with the buildings and then getting to the next step of getting out with the community groups and things of that nature, so.
Executive session, any brief executive session? Any other motion for executive session?